Alderman Schaki.
Here.
Alderman Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger. Mayor Johnson?
Quorum being present, would you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 3rd and May 10th, 2007? Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, corrections, additions?
Wesley?
No. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. I think it was Alderman Caddella? Bills, Alderman Wesley?
I'd like to make a motion to pay the Bills $68,075.39.
Wrong.
Wrong.
What?
Wrong.
$68,000.
Six hundred and eighteen thousand?
I'm sorry. Six hundred and eighteen thousand, $75.39.
Well, you're cutting the budget already.
Oh, I...
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question?
Question.
Alderman Schaki, was it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, page three, fourth one down, Caratuff Enterprises. We ordered twelve four-by-six and six three-by-five Wooddale flags. Do we fly them and then give them out afterwards, or what's the reason for so many?
Mr. Manager?
I think that's just replacing the flags. We replace them from time to time. Is that correct, Mr. Home?
And also being a custom order, you have to order in quantity in order to get a price, and then we just keep them on the shelf until we have to use them. So, this doesn't, isn't an order that's placed on a regular basis. It's an order that's placed every great while so that we get a stock of them and then replace them.
How many do we actually fly in town? You any idea?
Four or five? Okay, four or five of them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Knype?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Lewatan?
Yes.
Alderman Felice?
Yes.
Alderman Schaki?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
That passes. Do any citizens wish to address the city council this evening? If so, if you go to the podium and give us your name and address. Under Mayor's, I do have one written communique that was received from a gentleman named Martin. Asked me a couple of questions, but he didn't give me a last name, he didn't give me a return address. So, Martin, if you're out there and you want me to respond, I'll be glad to do that, but you need to send me a second letter and give me the information where I can respond to. It brings us to Mayor's report. Mr. Logan, would you join Mr. Williams at the podium, please?
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Alf Logan is retiring after thirty-four years of service with District 100 Fenton High School. Alf Logan began, began his career by serving in the U.S. Army as a captain from 1965 to 1967. He started out as a high school teacher in Niles West, pardon me, Niles North High School from '69 to '73. He started at Fenton as an assistant principal and served in that position from '73 to '83, and became principal in 1983 to the year 2000. They finally realized what a good man they had, and they made him superintendent in 2000. While he was principal, he was more than just interested in Fenton High School. He wanted to work and do everything he could do to help the entire Fenton, Fenton community, which also includes Bensonville and Wooddale. The Wooddale Community Assistance Council began in 1992, that's over fifteen years ago, as a request from then-mayor Jerry Greer, who wanted the community to develop a community-wide approach and a community group to solve community problems and use the entire capacities of all our community resources to share information and work together on concerns and problems, including gangs, child abuse, substance abuse, graffiti, truancy, crime, and helping families to cope. Over the years, the membership has included local residents, presidents of homeowners associations, church pastors, parents, mental health and service providers, women, shelter representatives, minority groups, youth groups, and of course, the library district, the park district, the school district, the fire prevention district, the Chamber of Commerce, and the police department. Quite a group. Alf Logan is one of the original members and has been co-chairman all those years. Over those years, the city has received hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants, which the community council acted as board of directors. This is a true example of the, the Community Assistance Council is a true example of the community working together to make life better. It's certainly been an honor and a privilege working with you, and we really appreciate all you've done.
Thanks, thank you, Chief.
We have a, a small little token of our appreciation, so you can remember us as you move on to your retirement. It says, "Presented to Alf E. Logan, May 2007, in recognition of your outstanding service and dedication to the residents of Wooddale as the co-chairman of the Community Assistance Council from 1992 to 2007. You have provided unselfish devotion to the community, its problems and needs. Thank you for sharing your outstanding talents and capabilities. Your efforts have made a significant impact on improving the quality of life for the Wooddale community." Thank you.
Thank you.
You can say a couple of words, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I want to thank Mayor Johnson and the members of the city council, as well as my good Frank, my good friend Frank Williams, and of course, my good friend Frank Benowitz. Frank and I have worked together for years, have developed a wonderful relationship. Many of the grant dollars that we, as a Community Assistance Council, were able to attain were as a result of Frank's efforts and the writing of those grants, so I can't take credit for that. But we had a great experience working together to really better the quality of life for people in Wooddale. One thing I wanted to share, too, is when I became the principal in 1983, I felt it important that we develop a police liaison program. And so, we worked with the village of Bensonville to establish that program. And Bensonville provided a police officer for us on campus back in '83. We were one of the original high schools in DuPage County to have a full-time police officer with us. And it worked very, very well. The officers we had were very student-oriented. Kids were free to come in and talk with them and share thoughts and concerns, and perhaps on occasion, talk a little bit about a ticket they received. But back in the late '90s, and I'll never forget this, it was about two weeks after Columbine, and of course, things were anxious and stressful in schools at that time, as they still are. We were having our spring assembly, and we highlighted the spring play and the prom and a variety of other student activities that were kind of coming to a crescendo at that point. And after that assembly, the superintendent, John Meredith, came to me and said, "Alf, I've got some bad news." And I said, "What's that?" And he said, "The city, the village of Bensonville is short of staff in their police department, and they're pulling their liaison officer." And I said, "John, they can't do that. I mean, you know, we've just experienced this horrendous problem in Colorado. I mean, they can't pull our liaison officer." He said, "Well, they did." And he said, "What do you think we should do?" And I said, "Well, I've got to go to my friend Frank Williams and see if I can get some help from Wooddale." And so, I called Frank on the phone, came over, we put together an agreement, and we've had a Wooddale police officer with us ever since. And they've done a great job. And Frank filled in the gap for me, so we're appreciative of that. So, thanks to Wooddale for all of your, all of your effort on our behalf. Thanking you again. And I want to introduce my dear wife, Anna Marie. She's a, she, she needs a great deal of recognition. She's my rock.
Counsel, without objection, I'm going to defer on item B and move to item C. And Sergeant Stout and Chief Benowitz, and does a representative of the park district want to join us at the podium? It's good to see you here in force. Why don't you join us and say a few words?
Well, actually, I did not come here as a representative of the Wooddale Park District, although I will represent the Board of Commissioners. I came here basically as a resident and citizen of Wooddale to thank Jerry for his years of service here, to myself and everyone else here that is a resident of Wooddale, for the fine job that he has done for the years he's served as a police officer in keeping us safe.
Thank you, Roberta. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Jerry, on behalf of the city council, we'd like to present you with this resolution expressing appreciation for services extended to Jerry Stout to the city of Wooddale, whereas Jerry Stout has devoted his experience, knowledge, and dedication to serving the city of Wooddale from May 21, 1977, to May 25, 2007, and whereas Jerry Stout served in the United States Air Force from December 31, 1968, through October 27, 1972, and was honorably discharged at the end of his enlistment as a staff sergeant, and whereas Jerry Stout began his service to the city of Wooddale as a police officer, youth officer, and sergeant, and served the community steadfastly in that capacity until his retirement, and whereas, as a police officer with the Wooddale Police Department, Jerry Stout has played a significant role in strengthening of the city of Wooddale with his commitment and expertise, and whereas Jerry Stout has exemplified the role of employee by having performed the duties consistently during his career with the city of Wooddale, and whereas the quality of life for the citizens of the city of Wooddale has been greatly enhanced by the knowledge, experience, and contributions of Jerry Stout, and whereas the city of Wooddale is deeply indebted to Jerry Stout for his distinguished service to the city for over thirty years, and whereas the city manager, mayor, and the city council of the city of Wooddale desire to express to Jerry Stout their gratitude for his dedicated service to the city, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Wooddale, DuPage County, Illinois, Section 1, that this, by this resolution, the mayor and the city council of the city of Wooddale express to Jerry Stout and his family their gratitude to his commitment, devotion, knowledge, expertise, and constructive service to the city manager, mayor, and city council of the city of Wooddale. Section 2, that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the city council of the city of Wooddale, that a signed copy be suitably presented to Jerry Stout. Section 3, that this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage in the manner provided by law. Is there such a motion?
There's a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Knype?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Lewatan?
Yes.
Alderman Felice?
Yes.
Alderman Schaki?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
That passes. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Well done.
First off, I'd like to acknowledge the fact that Jerry's father-in-law's here, Victoria's father, also Jerry's wife, Victoria, and his son, Little Jer. I know Savannah couldn't be here, she's in Arizona, but once again, this is another show of the fact that our families are all supportive of our efforts, and thanks for being here with us. When I first met Jerry, I believe it was 1975. We both were taking the test to get a job here, working with the Wooddale Police Department. It's really hard for me to summarize thirty years up in five or ten minutes and really make sure that it has significant meaning to understand the impact when you grew up someplace. And we all grew up here, every one of us that's currently employed, and everyone that's come before us. It's quite a, quite a landmark to have thirty years of service, thirty years of distinguished service. On a personal note, Jerry's going to be missed, but he's not going away from us. He's always going to be with us, he's always going to be here in the community. And as an alumni of the Wooddale Police Department, he's always going to be welcomed to our facility and by the members that are currently here and the members that are going to be coming after him. In little recognition, and this is just a small token of our recognition, we have a little bit of a shadow box here, and this is in recognition for Jerry's, for thirty years of outstanding dedicated service to the citizens of Wooddale as a police officer and a sergeant, Jerry Stout, 1977 to 2007. Jerry, you're never that far away from us, you're always going to be with us in, in spirit, and I hope you're going to be around our building quite often to kind of make sure that everybody understands the traditions of the past, because we can't know where we're going unless we know where we've been. Thanks a lot, Jerry, we appreciate your years of service.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
As I said at the department meeting last week, thirty years seems like a long time when you're starting out, and it's a blink of an eye when it comes to an end. And when I think of this job, I can only think of the Navy recruitment slogan, "It's not a jab, and it's an adventure." And it's been an adventure, and it's been an opportunity for me to forge some fantastic relationships with people who not only would risk their life for me, but also go out on daily basis and put their lives at risk to serve their community and, and to be there when everybody else is, is nowhere, let's put it that way, not around. And I have to recognize my family, because for what's for my, the support of my, my wife and my kids, who've had to bear the, the days that I couldn't be with them, the vacations and, or the holidays that I couldn't be with them, and to put up with the emotional stress that comes home with the officer, and then be able to take and, and help alleviate that and support them. I don't think anybody, I don't think any of us could have, could go through thirty years without, without that type of support. As I said at the department meeting, it's been an honor and my privilege to have worked with these people, to know them, to have them call me their friend, and it will always be deep in my heart and with much love. Thank you.
Do you have the other flag? Okay. Diana, would you come up? Diana Rona, of, I almost said suburban, sorry, of Parkway Bank and Trust and the director of the Chamber of Commerce, saying Kyle, would you come up and join us, too?
Once again, I am pleased to be here on behalf of the city of Wooddale and the Wooddale Chamber of Commerce. We, once again, will be awarding six scholarships to fine young men and women who are from the graduating classes of Addison Trail, Driscoll Catholic High School, Fenton High School, and Lake Park High School. The question that was asked this year of every student to write an essay was what they liked about Wooddale, what changes they could see for Wooddale, and a, a little insight into how they felt about living here and growing up here, and what could maybe make the community even better going forward, much along with the thinking of the city council members, what can we do going forward to keep the community inviting to new citizens and current residences? The recipients are from Lake Park High School, Kyle Pavlowski, from Fenton High School, Dan Tequila, Matthew Hart, Margaret Hammerin, from Driscoll Catholics, Stephanie Litska, and from Addison Trail, Maureen Crowley. Some of the individuals weren't able to be with us due to prior commitments, and we are hoping they will join us for the chamber luncheon in June, but Kyle would like to share some of his thoughts.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Wooddale's been a great community for me to grow up in and has provided me with all the needs I've had to get through my day. I think a great addition to the, to Wooddale would be more of a downtown area where people of all ages can go to relax on the weekends. In the downtown area, there could be a couple restaurants for people to eat at, a theater, a coffee shop, and other places where people could just relax and enjoy their time off together. Being a senior at Lake Park, living in Wooddale, most things I do on the weekend are out in the Bloomingdale area, where most of the Lake Park students live. It would be real nice to be able to showcase my town more with a couple extra places to go, while saving myself the fifteen to twenty-minute drive out to my friends. Wooddale's been a great town for me to grow up in, and it would be great for Wooddale to continue, continue being a great place for families to raise their children and enjoy their time off.
Alderman Knype, do we have an opening on the Economic Development Committee? Kyle, that was a great job. Congratulations on behalf of the whole city. Counsel, without objection, will be in recess for five minutes.
Alderman Coles?
Here.
Alderman Lewatan?
Yes.
Alderman Felice?
Here.
Alderman Schaki?
Here.
Alderman Wesley?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here. Quorum is once again present. That brings us back to item B under Mayor's report. We have a representative, I don't think we have a representative of the Wooddale swim team. Are you handling this one, Frank?
I don't, I don't see a representative, but we do have a request. We have had a similar request from the swim team in 2000 and 2002 for $500. Since they are going to sponsor the event, they share this sponsorship throughout the communities that participate in the competition, and this is Wooddale's turn again, so we do have a request for that donation. It would come out of tourism.
Alderman Wesley?
Mr. Mayor, first of all, I, I would think that this really came under finance, but obviously, you took the lead on this one. My question to, obviously, there's no one here from the swim team. My question is, where are these swimmers coming from? Where, how far out are they coming from? Do we have any idea?
Mr. Williams?
The only thing, information I have on that is the letter that you were provided. It's a, it's a league, a group of area swim teams. And I don't know if we have anybody from the park district over here, maybe they could explain it, and I'm not that familiar with it, but it, it's area people, and we do get a big influx of, of parents and the swimmers as well, that will come and, you know, be invited, come, go to our restaurants and, and spend some time in Wooddale during that day.
All right. Mr. Mayor, could I continue?
Alderman Wesley?
Mr. Mayor, I have no problem proving this, but since, you know, we, we done it in the past, obviously, and we don't do it every year, the only thing that I, I would caution this council in the near future here on anything like this, it, it should be earmarked only if they have a big meet here that's for several, several years apart, because I don't think this city council has a open checkbook for any organization to come here for donations or anything. But, I mean, I have no problem in proving this. If someone comes forward and they got a big conference coming in here, you know, and they need, you know, sponsorship, as long as it comes out of tourism fund, I have no problem in proving this, but I just want them to know personally that, you know, they can't come every year for this.
Anything further? Do you have a motion? Alderman Wesley?
I'll make a motion.
Alderman Coles, you make a motion to approve?
Second.
$500. Seconded by Alderman Knype?
Yep.
Anything further on the question? Roll call.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Knype?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Lewatan?
Yes.
Alderman Felice?
Yes.
Alderman Schaki?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
That passes. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one report. We would like to schedule a meeting for June 7th at 5:00 PM. This would be a strategic plan session prior to the city council meeting to review the proposed plans for 2007. This would just be an initial review. We'd probably, depending upon what came out of that, plan a work session. With the summer months coming up, it's a little more difficult to schedule this, so we thought it, we would get the majority of the council to come to that meeting. Please let my office know if it's going to be a conflict, and if too many of you cannot attend, we'll have to move it. Normally, we do the strategic planning sessions in the spring, but due to the change of the council, we put it off for a while, and now everyone's already taking vacations. So, kind of work with us on this and let us know if you can or cannot make this. Thank you. June 7th. This is an attempt, as the manager said, to try something a little different. We will be serving a light meal, and again, due to summer schedules and people taking the weekends off, this is something that the city of Des Plaines does, and they advised me that it has worked very well for them. Does anybody know at this moment whether they have any conflicts on that date?
No, I, I don't. That's fine.
All right, very good. We do not have any items on the consent agenda. Planning, zoning, and building. Alderman Schaki?
Mr. Mayor, no report.
Public Health, Safety, and Judiciary. Alderman Coles?
No reports, sir.
Public Works. Alderman Felice?
I have one item, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property, the Woods Lift Station standby generator owned by the city of Wooddale.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question?
Question.
Alderman Wesley?
That generator, is there, is there a reason why we can't use it in our house, or it's just too old, or can't use it in another building, or?
Mr. Home?
Right now, we don't have a home for it to go elsewhere. It's, we're trying to standardize all of our generators at all of our lift stations. This generator, I believe, was 1992, so about fifteen years old now, and it's been well-maintained in good operating condition, but we're, it's, we're rehabbing the whole lift station, so we're going to upgrade and standardize our generators.
It's fine. I just, it's fine.
Anything further on the question? Roll call.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Knype?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Lewatan?
Yes.
Alderman Felice?
Yes.
Alderman Schaki?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
That passes ordinance 0-07-16. Does that conclude your report, Alderman Felice?
Yes, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Finance Administration, Alderman Wesley?
No report, Mayor.
Community and Economic Development, Alderman Knype?
No report.
We do not have any other business. We do need an executive session tonight. I need a motion to recess the city council to executive session for purposes of review of the official minutes, collective bargaining, and personnel pursuant to five ILCS 120/2C 21, 2C 2, and 2C 1. Is there such a motion?
Move.
To recess the city council to executive session? Is that your motion, Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Seconded by Alderman Knype?
Yep.
Roll call.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Knype?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Lewatan?
Yes.
Alderman Felice?
Yes.
Alderman Schaki?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
That passes?
Here.
Alderman Knype?
Here.
Alderman Caddella?
Here.
Alderman Schaki?
Here.
Alderman Winger? Alderman Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Lewatan?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here. Quorum is once again present. Alderman Schaki, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do. I'd like to make a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Wooddale and the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 150, as presented to us, and for the dates of May 1st, 2006, through April 30th, 2009, and to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement and the city clerk to attest to it on this date of May 17th, 2007.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Felice?
Yes.
Alderman Knype?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Schaki?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewatan?
Yes.
That passes. There are no items to be referred. There are no items for information only. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of April seventh, two thousand and five? Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, Alderman Knite?
On page three, section eleven, under other business C, for the ordinance increasing the bonding requirements, first line, it says it was moved by Alderman, seconded by Alderman. There was no identification as to who made the...
Does the movement and the second, or remember who did that?
I can't remember.
Motion to amend is approved and will be incorporated. The city clerk will review the tape and add those names. Anything further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Says communications, but I'm going to do communications under item eight. Approval of bills, Alderman Coles?
I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills of April twenty-first, two thousand and five, of six hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents.
Second.
Further on the question? I've been advised that that's a correct figure despite what the agenda says?
That's a correct figure due to an error in the billing.
Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Suback?
Yes.
Alderman Knite?
Yes.
Alderman Pyzek?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Zobek?
Yes.
Alderman Tolemy?
No.
That passes. Under citizens to be heard, Alderman Zobek?
I have a statement I'd like to read. The April eighth edition of the Daily Herald carried an article about the Aldermanic election in the fourth ward. That article attributed a quote to me that was both derogatory and disgusting. That quote was pure fiction. I did not make it. I contacted the editor of the newspaper, assured me that she would talk the reporter and hear his side of the story. Haven't heard anything since. I also left a message for Mr. Wesley at his home, saying I did not make the quote. I have since spoken to him personally, and he's assured me that he knows it was false. He knows that the reporter has a long history of fabricating quotes. I would have let the matter drop there, however, during the last two weeks, several people have spoken to me personally and by phone, telling me it was a terrible thing to say. I agree. That's why I'm bringing it up tonight. Again, I assure you, I did not make that statement. As far as I'm concerned, I'm putting this to rest so that all of us can get on with our lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Zobek. I know you to be a man of integrity, and I am sure that you did not make those comments. Any other citizens wish to address the city council?